Welcome. This is the August 20th meeting of the Wallingford Zoning Board of Appeals. I'd like to start the meeting by saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next decision will be published in the Record Journal on Friday, August 24, 2018. The effective date of your variance will be Friday, August 24, 2018. The date of certified copy is recorded on the land records. The statutory 15-day appeal period will expire on Sunday, September 9, 2018. If you commence operations and/or constructions during the appeal period, you do so at your own risk. If anybody is here for 18-017, a variance request from Harvest Park Associates, it's being postponed until next month. All right, first up is 18-019, variance request from Radowitz for residential use, single-family dwelling at 383 North Colony Street. First up, voting tonight will be Mr. Conroy, Mr. Carmody, Mr. Rice, Ms. Tata, and myself. Hi.
Hi.
Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Building was legally non-conforming for residential use prior to June 5, 2015, at which time change of use permit was issued for conforming use of first-floor commercial, personal service, and second-floor residential use. Applicants seek single-family residential use, non-conforming, where conformity is required in a CA-12 district. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Brian Radziewicz, 1690 Dixwell Ave., Hamden, Connecticut.
Okay, could you-
Well, sir, can you spell your first name? Is it B.R.I.?
I, with an I, yeah.
Pull the microphone a little closer to you, please. There you go.
Okay.
And please explain your application.
Yeah, so, we're trying to prepare the house for sale. In the course of due diligence, our real estate agent visited the town planner to confirm the status of the zoning, the current status. And she was told by the town planner that we would need to request a variance for residential use. So that's what brings me here today, essentially.
Okay, how long have you owned the house?
We closed on the house late 2015, I think.
Okay, were you part of the variance for, the earlier variance for this, or was that for you?
That was another issue. I was involved in, yeah.
Okay. And your plans are to make the first floor a residential-
Residential. I mean, that's what the property was being used for when we bought it. There was a family living there. Initially, we thought we were going to have a business at the property-
Okay.
-and the downstairs was going to be the commercial area.
Mm-hmm.
But we've been told since that there's not adequate parking, and that, you know, a commercial's not going to work there, and we really need to request a variance back to residential. So that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. Has anybody got any questions? No? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against? Do you have anything further before I close the public hearing?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board.
I make a motion that we, um, change the zone? No?
No, we're going to, you're going to make a motion to approve the application.
Oh, okay. Make a motion that we approve this application.
Second.
I was a little confused there, sorry.
Motion to approve, Mr. Conroy.
I, uh, I move to approve.
Okay. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Chairman Ruzek?
Yes, your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Next up is 18-020, variance request from Foreman for side yard setback of 6.6 feet to construct a two-car garage at 9 Woodley Court. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Applicant requests side setback of 6.6 feet where 16.6 feet exists and 20 feet is required to construct a two-car garage at 9 Woodley Court in an R-18 district. Applicant is seeking replacement of a single-car garage destroyed in May 2018 storm with two-car garage. Proposed garage could be compliant with zoning if located approximately four feet further to the south dwelling rear. Therefore, this office cannot discern hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is David Lovato. I live at 21 Wadsworth Lane in Wallingford. I'm representing Ms. Foreman, who was out of the country at this time.
Okay, could you please explain the application?
It's just what you said, there was a-
Could you pull the microphone closer so we can hear you?
The attached garage was destroyed by a large tree that was, and the neighbor's property, and they're looking to rebuild their existing garage to a two-car garage, upgrade it to a two-car attached garage to be compliant, not compliant, but can, compatible with all the other houses in the neighborhood.
Right, but according to staff comments, if you moved the garage four feet to the south, you wouldn't need the variance.
Four feet to the south would be, would make it a detached, detached garage.
Would that be true?
Moving to the south, this way.
Yeah, that would be detached.
Well, just attach it to the back. I'm just looking at their comments and asking if that's a possibility.
I guess it would be. I would have to go back to the surveyor, and they would have to go through their builder.
Are you the builder, or?
No, I'm just a friend of the family.
Okay. I mean, I, by looking at the map and the plan here, there looks to me like there's many different options you possibly could do to make it work. Would you like to table this and forward it to the September meeting?
I would like to table it and forward it to the September meeting.
Amy, you have a problem with that?
I absolutely do not have a problem with it. I might add, though, I have spoken with the homeowner and the applicant and raised these potential options, although not proposed. You are correct, sir, as representative, that it would be a detached garage, moving it back. It also could be attached, if it were attached, behind the house. So, again, it would, it would take some new planning, and the office could support replacing the single-car garage that was most definitely destroyed with that storm.
I mean, truthfully, I have, I understand possibly, if you have two cars, you'd want to have a two-car garage, I understand that, but I also think there's, looking at, I mean, it is a weird-shaped lot, but also looking at the possibilities here, something could possibly be done without the need of a variance.
I will bring it up to them. If I recall the property, I believe it drops quite a bit in the back, too, so I'd have to, they'd have to do a little topo work on it. Because I believe the original garage is built up with a wall. So to kick it back, they would have to extend the wall, it falls out. It's a walkout basement, I believe, on the, on the back of the house.
Okay. Would you like to postpone until next month?
Like to postpone until next month.
Can I get a motion?
What do you want, to postpone or table?
Postpone until September meeting?
Make a motion that we postpone this till next meeting?
Second. Sorry.
Okay, motion to postpone to the September meeting. Mr. Conroy?
Yes.
Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Chairman Ruzek?
Yes, your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Next up is 18-020, variance request from Foreman for side yard setback of 6.6 feet to construct a two-car garage at 9 Woodley Court. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Applicant requests side setback of 6.6 feet where 16.6 feet exists and 20 feet is required to construct a two-car garage at 9 Woodley Court in an R-18 district. Applicant is seeking replacement of a single-car garage destroyed in May 2018 storm with two-car garage. Proposed garage could be compliant with zoning if located approximately four feet further to the south dwelling rear. Therefore, this office cannot discern hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Brett McCarthy, 146 Cook Road, Wallingford.
Okay, could you please explain your application?
Um, we hired some professionals to obviously come out, stake out the property, pour the foundation, and obviously, somewhere, something went wrong, and we're looking-
Could you pull the microphone just a little closer to you, please?
We're looking for the variance to fix the situation at hand.
So what you're saying is that the foundation got poured a couple feet closer to the, for your front setback than it was supposed to be?
Yes, on the site plan, the setback was at 81 feet, so something went wrong somewhere.
Okay, did you try buying a piece of property from the front, property owners? Get your one foot that way?
Um, no, not yet. We haven't tried that route.
Okay. Now, was it staked out properly? I mean, I mean, who's, who's falling on the sword here? Is it the foundation guy, or is it the surveyor, or, I mean, who, who do you think, just, or possibility of both?
They're just pointing fingers back and forth right now.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, unfortunately, we hired these people who are licensed professionals to do their job, and I'm a nurse, he's a firefighter-
Oh, ma'am, we need your name.
Danielle McCarthy.
Okay.
Sorry. Um, we hired the people to do their job, to stake it out, to pour the foundation where it's supposed to be. We were told prior to even starting the process that we had an 81-foot setback line, and somehow it was poured at 74 feet.
Okay.
So I'm not sure whose error it was. Everyone's pointing fingers at each other, but we didn't stake it out.
Right, right. I understand, and I feel for you, believe me, but here's, here's my problem, is that this is the second case since I've been on this board that we've run into similar to this. We had a builder bought two properties, well, one property, subdivided it, built the front house, built the rear house, complete. He actually had a sale on the house, and to get the CO, they went out and checked and found out, I think he was four or five feet, but still the same. And, and the problem being with something like this, and believe me when I tell you, I really feel for you, and, but if we allow things like this to go on, every builder in town will be in the audience, buying pieces of property that they're two feet, three feet short, and we will be stuck approving it because we'll end up in court if we don't. That's just my feeling on it, and believe me when I tell you, I feel for you, it's a foot, and when you look at a foot, you say to yourself, and myself, in my mind, I'm like, it's only a foot, but unfortunately, and this is just me talking, there's other members here, I don't know how they're, how they feel about it, but I personally can't support this because if, if we are allowing this, we're going to allow every other one, and I'm just very sorry about that, but that's the way I feel, but I'm, there's other members. Has anybody else got any questions, or? Mr. Conroy? So, would you be willing to postpone this and ask your neighbors if you can buy a foot?
We have our neighbors here in support of this variance.
Would they be willing to sell your foot? We, we're not, I, I can't support the variance for the exact same reason the chair said it, although I would love to, because I feel bad and I understand, I'm, I'm, I build things and I understand. When people make mistakes, good people pay for it, but we can't, I couldn't support it because, for the exact same reasons the chair said. But perhaps your neighbors could sell you one foot, and that would solve the entire problem with no, with nothing else, if they can.
That would not require a postponement. That would be an alternative to the variance request. That's one option. The, the bottom line is this, there is no hardship. We have 12 acres, why it was even constructed so close?
Well, we, we have answers to that question.
But, but that, that being, if there was a means to comply, and-
We did-
-an error or something occurred, then that's not the basis for a var, for a variance.
On our site map, it's set at 81 feet, so we were in compliance, and we purposely put the house where it is for numerous reasons, upon the surveyor, the excavator-
Sanitarium.
Sanitarium, sorry.
So we put this house at the front of the lot due to the water table when they came out and did the perk testing. They looked at it and said, and I said, "Words apply all place for the house." They said, "Towards the front of the slot, due to the water table." Therefore, we had to have an engineered septic system put in because our water table was so high, and it cost us an extra $15,000 than the original quote was it's system in. Also, the woods, which is eight acres of this property, is mainly wetlands. So we put the house on recommendation from the surveyor, and the sanitation, and from hazelwood excavating into this area, in the site plan, which was all compliant with the zoning regulations.
I, believe me when I tell you, I feel for you, too, I, I, but the bigger problem for us here on this board is if we do it, and then the next person comes and we deny it, we'll end up in court, and it gets very messy from there on out. That's just the way I feel. I'm just one voting, and I'm just, I'm just being upfront, and like I said, I feel for you, too, I really do. It's one foot, but unfortunately, that's just the way I, I see it. So has anybody else got any comments? Mr. Carmody?
Thank you. I think this is an unfortunate situation, which has been no fault of the homeowners. They followed, you know, everything that they could follow, and they've, they've sought the advice and expertise of, of the sanitarian, the, the excavator. This is an extreme penalty in my mind for, for one, a one-foot mistake, and so I would support the variance based on that, but I, I think that is, it's extreme to deny this, this application based on one foot, especially when the neighbor supports this variance.
We have a note from her, too, and she's here to talk tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with Commissioner Carmody. I think if we look at things on a case-by-case basis, this is already, you know, 75 feet off the road. Actually, I drove by the property this evening before the meeting, and I, I had a hard time even seeing the house. It's, it's that far back. So I don't think a foot is going to ever bother anybody, particularly the neighbors that are currently there don't have a problem with it. I don't think anyone would ever, if we were to tell them, you know, "You can't have this variance," and then make them rebuild the house and redo the foundation and move it back a foot, I don't think anyone would ever notice that that was moved a foot. So I, I'm in support of this. I do understand the issue of setting a precedent, but I think if we look at things on a case-by-case basis, I, I don't see any need to make them go through all of that for, for a foot. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
I just got one question, Steph. Is the only solution for them to purchase another foot of property? Is that the only solution?
Right now, it's the front porch that's over the line. The entire house is not, so perhaps there could be some adjusting of the front porch, and we'd be in compliance. That's why we mentioned that there are several options, of which were not proposed, and as they've just stated, there was some issues with the land, which is what we're seeking here for the basis for granting a variance. It's not on the people, it is regarding the land. This bodes the land, and if we're unraveling the very fabric of zoning, if we're granting it based on an individual case for a foot or for 10 feet, there are, it's just a front porch, so perhaps, I, I can't answer that, that would have to be a builder or whatever, but the front porch is what's encroaching, not the entire structure. So, an option, one option was to buy a little chunk of land that would-
So if they didn't have-
That would be private between the, the parties.
Is that a problem?
The porch is attached to the house, it's poured concrete.
Part of the foundation.
It's part of the foundation.
The foundation, port for the porch, so we were told we would have to cut that porch off-
It would risk the integrity.
-and report another foundation inside of that.
And that would be, be the builder's problem, not yours, correct?
It would cost us a significant amount of money.
It would cost you the money?
Yes.
Because no one's taking-
It was a builder's mistake, wasn't it?
No one's taking the blame.
How do we collect money from, people are just going to point fingers at each other?
No, I mean, isn't it the builder's mistake where it was put?
Everybody's pointing fingers at the surveyor.
Builder's saying, the surveyor's, surveyor's saying the guy poured the foundation, so-
Nobody will say that it was their mistake.
So the whole porch foundation would have to be removed, and a new foundation would have to be poured.
So this might take months to get into court and everything.
Right.
Yes.
Thank you.
We, we, trust me, we navigated all options before even coming to this board.
Ms. Tata?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you had said there's wetlands on the property also, and those are to the rear of the house?
Yes.
So when you, when you picked the initial location, which obviously was, you know, a foot or two away from where it is now, the, the purpose of that was to stay away from-
It was actually six feet away from where it is now.
The front porch was supposed to be 81 feet, somehow it's 74 right now.
Okay. And the wetlands, how, how far away are those approximately?
From the house? Probably 300 feet.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And we, we looked towards the back of the field that their house is in, and that's where they did their perk testing and told us this is not a good spot, because you're going to have water problems in the future if you put a house here due to the water table.
Sure.
They recommended putting it further towards the front of the lot for that reason, because it was drier up there.
Yeah, it's higher and flatter, so the water slows down.
It slips down towards the woods.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything further? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Yes, ma'am, you first. Yes, please, put a microphone, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Lynn Cook Andrews. I live at 210 Northford Road. They are one foot on my property, my family's property, and we fully support the variance. There's no reason that the variance cannot be granted for one foot of builder or surveyor's error after the house is built. It would be a hardship to move the house for them, financial hardship. I know you don't want to hear that, but it's true. I've not heard any other options besides cut the front porch off, although Ms. Torrey has said there's many options. We heard one. What are the other options for them?
Ma'am, you have to speak through the chair.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
That's okay.
That's fine. So, we're fully in support, it does not impact us at all. Our other neighbor is here as well to talk, fully in support of the variance. We hope that you grant it. It would not be setting precedent, as Ms. Tata said, it would be case by case. The house is built, the roof is on, the interior electrical plumbing is all in, it would be a hardship for the McCarthys to have to move their entire home for one foot, so please grant the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Please state your name and address for the record.
Francis Mazzelli, 233 Northford Road. I'm, I'm going to be their neighbor right next door. I fully support the variance. Now, my question, and my only question is, who was the compliance officer that should have made sure that this didn't happen?
I, I don't know.
Is there, is there a zoning enforcement officer? Even when this foundation was poured, or when it was dug? That's my question. And I fully support the variance, because it doesn't affect me in the least. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? Hearing none, do you have any further you want to add before I close the-
No, thank you.
I'll say, thank you.
All right, I'll close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board.
I, I just wanted to comment on-
Go ahead.
-one thing, the gentleman that just got up, I don't believe it's the zoning enforcement officer who would be the compliance officer, correct?
The building official serves as zoning enforcement at this stage of the game, and unfortunately, with the town of Wallingford, until it comes to a certificate of occupancy, there is no inspection required. Technically, there, there should be at the pouring of the foundation, it could have been caught sooner, but to no fault of own, but the, the process.
Go ahead, Christine.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we approve the front yard setback of 73 feet where 74.01 feet exists and 75 feet is required.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the variance. Mr. Conroy?
No.
Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Chairman Ruzek?
Yes. Your application's been approved.
Thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Appreciate it.
Next up is application 18-022, variance request from Peretta for a front yard setback of 13 feet and 16.6 feet where 40 feet is required to construct a commercial retail services building at 228 South Colony Road in a CA-12 district. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Applicant seeks front yard of 13 feet and 16.6 feet where zero exists and 40 feet is required to construct a commercial retail building in a CA-12 district. Parcel is a vacant L-shaped corner lot with an undersized building envelope. To identify associated parking requirements and landscaping buffers, et cetera, building will encroach on required front yard setback regardless of its configuration. This office can support the proposed development of this vacant parcel due to its innate hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman-
Please state your name and address for the rec-
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, for the record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm. To my left is our owner and applicant, Ms. Peretta. The property, as you know before you, is a parcel that's 16,389 square feet in size or .376 acres. It's shown on, of course, the application we've submitted, and it is a corner lot. It's located in the CA-12 zone, it's on the east side of South Colony, just north on Ward Street, and it is a vacant lot. Now, the applicant requests a variance of Section 5.1B regarding the requirement of two front yard setbacks, again, being a corner lot, from the 40-foot requirement-
in a CA-12 district. Madam Secretary, do we have any correspondence?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have staff notes. Applicant seeks front yard of thirteen feet and sixteen point six feet where zero exists and forty feet is required to construct a commercial retail building in a CA-12 district. Parcel is a vacant L-shaped corner lot with an undersized building envelope. To identify associated parking requirements and landscaping buffers, et cetera, building will encroach on required front yard setback regardless of its configuration. This office can support the proposed development of this vacant parcel due to its innate hardship. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Please state your, uh, name and address for the rec.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, members of the board, for the record, my name is Dennis Sennaviva. I'm an attorney with the Sennaviva Law Firm. To my left is our owner and applicant, uh, Ms. Peretta. The property, as you know, before you, is a parcel that's sixteen thousand three hundred and eighty-nine square feet in size, or point three seven six acres. It's shown on, of course, the application we've submitted, and it is a corner lot. It's located in the CA-12 zone, it's on the east side of South Colony, just north on Ward Street. And it is a vacant lot. Now, the applicant requests a variance of section five point one B regarding the requirement of two front yard setbacks and being a corner lot, uh, from the forty-foot requirement reduction to thirteen point zero feet from South Colony's front yard and sixteen point six feet from the Ward Street, um, portion of the property. The plan, uh, as submitted to the board, is to construct a forty by forty-eight two-story building. Uh, the building would face South Colony, and the parking area, which is to the, proposed to the rear of the building, would be accessed off of Ward Street. And sufficiently set back again to the rear of the proposed building to provide sufficient queuing distance on Ward. Now, as the staff comments point out, the hardship, of course, arises from the fact that while this is a smaller parcel, an L-shaped parcel, it is a, an approved building lot. It's a lot that exists, um, prior to the enactment of all the regulations in the CA-12 zone. And because it's a smaller lot and a corner lot with two front yards, the application of the strict requirements of the front yard setbacks creates a substantial diminution of the lot area for construction. You really have a very limited area or building envelope. One of the exhibits, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer is, I, I've asked, um, our engineer to prepare, um, a layout of what is the building envelope with the application of the rules, and I, and it's in color, so I'd like to show it to you. I think it's, it's easy to see that it's very, very limited on this L-shaped lot. Does change anything? Of course, the, the pink shows the, what are the, what would be permitted with the application of those forty-foot, um, setbacks along the two front yards. You can see it's a very narrow building footprint that would be permitted, would not permit anything near, uh, the size and location of the proposed building. It would be restraint of the use of that site. Site could not be fairly used or developed with the application of those setback requirements. I think locating the builder closer to the road is consistent with other buildings along the same neighborhood. Other buildings also appear, uh, within that setback, they are residential uses, but they are, uh, within that front setback. So it's consistent with keeping the parking behind the building. It would be consistent with managing a property effectively and, and providing a, a good use for my client, and, uh, consistent with wanting to develop it as a commercial property, this being a commercially zoned piece. That's it.
That's simple, huh?
That's it.
Very good. I, I, actually, this lot's been empty for a long time. It looks good. What's, what are you planning on? Do you have a plan for the building?
Yes, um, for
Could you please state your name and
Yes, my name is Lisa Peretta, and I hear salon and some, uh, massage therapy, facials, I'm, I'm in that type of business.
Okay, all right. Anybody got any questions? Is, now, I'm under the impression that, that this is never going to be allowed to have anything that's going to be a real high-use building, so, if you ever sell it, if it, what, what happens if it becomes a restaurant? Are we going to make sure, I already talked to the zoning officer about this, but I want to make sure that we understand that. If, what happens if someone buys this as a commercial u, unit and decides to put a deli in? You know, we have to think about not just your use, but the use in the future, is what I'm worried about. I think your use is great, and it's a beautiful plan, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, if I may, that, to respond to Mr. Conroy, uh, this has to go on to Planning and Zoning Commission for site plan approval. So for any uses, that would be beyond what originally intended, it would have to go follow the change of use procedures. So we're strictly dealing with the parcel as it's proposed.
And to your point, there'd be different parking requirements, there'd be also traffic concerns and planning
They're all, those will all be addressed during the site plan process, so that's yet forthcoming.
That's it, I'm good. Um, just a point of interest, Amy. Mr. Rice questioned something, and I, I have the same question. Since it's listed as one variance, I realize they're both front yard, but should be, they be done separately? Because one's thirteen feet and the other's sixteen point six?
In this case, you can do it either way. It certainly has no harm to grant two separate front yard variances, but we classify them as a single on the corner lot.
No, it's okay. I'm just talking about if when we get to that point, it was brought to my attention, I just wanted to clarify.
And to know that they are in compliance with other elements of their, their future site plan, so what they're asking for in, in building setback from frontage, they're giving in required landscaping and other elements for the site that is in compliance, so.
Does anybody else got any questions? Mr. Rice?
No.
No, you're set? Is there anybody here to speak in favor of this application? Anybody here to speak against this application? Do you have anything further?
Uh, I'm fine, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Short and sweet, huh?
When we get, uh, wonderful staff comments, I, I try not to mess them up.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and open it up for discussion and possible action by the board. I, uh, move to approve the application. Second.
Motion to approve Mr. Conroy. Mr. Carmody?
Yes.
Mr. Rice?
Yes.
Ms. Tata?
Yes.
Chair Ruzek?
Yes, your application's been approved. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job, too, by the way. It looked nice. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the minutes of the July sixteenth, two thousand and eighteen meeting.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, also, I just wanted to bring everybody's attention to another thing before I let Ms. Torrey have the microphone. Everybody see that we're being sued? Okay, just make sure everybody saw that. Um, go ahead, Amy.
I just, uh, another point for sort of, uh, discussion point for, for the board. Um, it's been requested, your presence has been requested for a joint special meeting workshop with the Planning and Zoning Commission, targeting October of this year, and Casey will use an email sort of doodle poll to, to see dates that may work. The point of this is just to see where there's some crossover and where we can help one another not be in, in opposing, uh, opposing boards. And perfect example is, a number of years ago, this was done, it was very helpful, and which resulted in the new regulations surrounding garages. The ZBA raised an issue at the time that there was a awful lot of garage applications coming in, and, and large garages, which seems to be the trend today. Um, and the regulations at that point were very restrictive, and thus, the regulation was amended jointly to have a formula, you know, whether that works remains to be seen, but to come, uh, to give a little more when the house is a little larger, you know, based on the floor space. But, so just showing one, the joint discussion yielding some positive results by one talking to another, so, um, I'm just the messenger, saying that this, this, we would love to have, you know, some working together, and again, this is just a workshop setting targeted for October, and I hope you'll find that amenable. Join the party. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.